All right, we'll go ahead and pay tribute to the country we live in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to the April ninth meeting here at the Dublin Town Hall. We'll have the roll call.
Dan Wickler present.
Rita Pickcock present.
Mick Snyder present.
Nathan Alrick present. We as a town successfully made it through the Eclipse twenty twenty four. Everything went smooth, had a few cars over in the cemetery and a few cars in the park that washed it. Didn't cause any harm and didn't leave any trash to my knowledge, so I think everything went great. So we had a great weather. We didn't have eighty thousand people take over the town, so that was a great thing. So all in all, it was all good. Everyone had a chance to read the minutes from last month?
Yes.
We'll seek approval for the minutes and the adjustments that have been presented to us.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes and adjustments as present.
Presented. Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's all right, well, we're thinking about it. All right, the police report, do we have one?
We have a report, yes, just don't have a.
All right, there was two animal problems, one business check, one civil disturbance, one community policing, one duplicate call, I'm not sure what that means, one escort, one flag down, one harassment, one investigation, one loss of property, two peace officer details, had a search warrant, had a shop lifter, had one speak with the officer call, had four special patrols, had one suspicious person. They performed two traffic stops, had one V I N check, had one wanted person, and one welfare check for a total of twenty six calls for March. Fire report, sir?
Ah, March twenty twenty four, ALS zero, BLS hundred fifty, diamond oil is free to zero, fire lines are zero, water is zero.
Good month, any questions for the fire chief? All right, do you have any building permits issued this month, sir?
No, I think it was, well, yeah, we did too, I'm sorry. We had Roger Zimmer for a, it's just an electric. He was having a pole set for his garage.
Everything good on the building permits, sir? All right, we'll turn it over to you for a few moments. Superintendent's report, we've got hydrant flushing on the agenda.
Yes, hydrant flushing and we need to exercise valves before our inspection next month. So those are two major things that we're really trying to push through this, to get through this month, so.
So you've got a date of the hydrant flushing between the fifteenth and the nineteenth.
Yes.
Is that set in stone or would that change due to weather?
Uh, no, it's set in stone.
Okay.
Rain or shine, we'll do it.
There's a possibility that you might have low pressure in those areas and possibly some discolored.
Yeah.
Water, so try to refrain from doing laundry those days if you can, or at least check the water before you do.
You can do it in the evening after, after they shut everything down. Just let it run for a good five minutes before they.
Yeah.
Make sure they see it clean before they do laundry or cook.
We're in pretty good shape though, I mean, we usually, most of the time, they're pretty clean when we open them, so.
Right.
I think we're in great shape on that. The other thing that I have is this, um, down here on State Street, there's two drains down here and they're plugged, I mean, they're full. The one, I mean, they, they came in and they, they ran a camera in there and then they washed, ran their jet through there and washed out probably fourteen, fifteen feet, but it's solid all the way through, it's completely full.
It's like road grime, what do you mean by solid?
It's got, it's full of dirt and, and rocks and sand and, I mean, it's just plump full. You know, they couldn't, they couldn't get any farther than that, it was just that hard. I want to take and come off that and go over to the railroad bed there and with an eight inch pipe to open those two drains up to get them back to where they're in use, to where they're usable, because right now they're not doing anything, the water that's going away down there is just slowly dissipating into the ground. So.
So is that street damage? Or is it off to the edge of the street, I'm not sure where this.
No, it's, it won't be in the street, it'll be, it'll be on the easement on the side. So that's, that's where we'll dig to go, to go with the new.
So do they get underneath the road, would that open up then?
That's open, yeah.
Okay, so it's just a drain line going from the edge of the road to the railroad tracks?
Yeah, yeah, it's about, they, the drain between the two was open, but the one, um, they got about a foot in and it was like he hit a wall and they just kept going, kept going. He said, man, he said, we could spend, I mean, we could spend hundreds of dollars trying to clean that drain out, it'd just be cheaper just.
Replace it.
Replace it and move on.
Do you know approximately how far that is or if there's a major cost of this?
It's probably about, I'm guessing, I measured about three hundred feet, two fifty, two seventy, something like that. I got a price for three hundred feet of dual wall. I got a price through utility supply. Then I got a price through Wayne County Sales and the price through utility supply for the dual wall was fifteen thirty. At Wayne County Supply was like eight hundred and it's just eight hundred and some change for that one. And then, um, and that, the dual wall has its connectors on the end. So if we go with the single wall, um, which was eight hundred and sixty one dollars through utility supply, with that we would have to connect them and, um, it's just a thinner pipe, it's not gonna last, it's, it's got ridges in it, so it's gonna catch more stuff. The dual wall's a slick pipe inside, so, which is really what we'd rather have. And then, uh, while I'm on that same thing, I want to talk about the community club. Over behind the community club, we, last year we worked and put rock and, you know, plastic and so forth up on the building, trying to keep the water from washing in there. It, it slowed it down, but it didn't stop it. I'd like to put a drain in there, just a four inch perforated sock pipe through there to kinda get rid of some of that water back there to kinda catch it, so it's got some place to go rather than just sitting down there building up and then washing back underneath the building.
There is a drain from the edge of the building to the catch basin out there, I think, I think we put one.
No, it's, it's, there's one on the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, at the, of the road.
Right.
Then there's one at the entrance down there, there's a drain that runs there.
Right.
And then there is, there's no drain, there's the old drain that is collapsed down there, going to the railroad bed and it's just the old drain there that's, I mean, and it's collapsed down there on the end. That's what the big suck hole was, we finally closed up.
Right.
Was from that, so, um, you know, so it's, it's no longer, that, that drain no longer is open.
Okay, so I thought we put a drain from the edge of the building to the catch, well, catch basin out here to the edge of the road on the west side.
Yeah, no, 'cause the, the drain comes from this drain box up here by, on the corner of Foundry and Milton there, it comes from there to the edge of the drive, to the other edge of the drive and then goes, it's, it doesn't come to the valve. Yeah, yeah, it comes, it doesn't go the right direction, so.
So you're looking to put a catch basin on the east side of the building?
No, I just wanna put a perforated sock pipe in there to kinda help catch some of that water and get it out of there. You know, just to, to slow it down and stop it from going in the building, and that's, that's our number one goal, so, you know, and that water's not good on anything.
Um, while you're at it, I'm looking for you to check for Ronnie Sutherland's drain real good again. I just was there a little bit ago, but it's still full, if I want to need to have.
That drain stays full.
Truly jet it or if we need to do something majorly different there, but it's still full of water almost to the edge tonight.
Almost to the top?
Yeah.
Okay.
What one's that?
In front of Ronnie Sutherland's garage, between there and the Dollar Store fence.
We had it jetted out last year and they had it opened up pretty good, so.
Wiped his garage out again, the rain we had the other day, so.
And we're getting rain over there now, starting tonight.
Yeah, so I know he wasn't a happy camper, but I did look tonight, it's still full water, that particular drain is.
Yeah, if, um, I mean, it was.
We can give us some quick attention.
I think it was like eight hundred dollars last year when we had that jetted out, am I correct on that Julie, is that what we paid him? Like eight hundred dollars to have that jetted out and, um, you know, and that, I think we're probably in the same boat with it, we probably just need to look into, um, just replacing that line through there.
With bigger size, you know?
Yeah, well, we can only go as big as what we're dumping into, so.
I, I know the day we had that rain, they were all full, I looked at every single one up and it was to the limits.
They're full everywhere.
And, you know, oddly enough, the Dollar Store pond was not full, so there was no issue with the Dollar Store pond whatsoever. It was just all coming off that field to the west of Ronnie's place there. Yeah, all those basins were just plump packed. But yeah, if you can see about getting that jetted or whatever, might need attention to that this week, it'd be appreciated.
So you wanna have it jetted again?
If it needs it, yeah.
Well, if it's outdrained and it probably needs to be jetted again, that means we've probably got a tree growing in there somewhere or something, so. Probably gonna be one of those deals where we probably, I mean.
Can they run the camera after they get the jet done? Can they run the camera through it after it gets jetted and see what's in it, if there's any tree roots?
Yeah, it costs more for that, I mean, he can run the camera in there, I mean, if it's, if it's plugged that bad and it's probably not got much water, I'll be able to run a camera in there and see what it is anyway.
Can they run the camera in with it full of water?
He can, yeah, yeah, that's how he's seen that over there, so.
It definitely needs something, so that's stressing on top of that.
It'd be better to do the camera first and maybe then we can decide whether.
Decide whether to change it.
Blowing it out will work or whether, 'cause you mentioned something about putting in another catch basin or, or a larger pipe.
Yeah, and if, I think honestly, if we take, if we are gonna go that route, I would like to put a catch basin in on the other end, on the west end of the street up nearby where Jeremy's driveway starts, put a catch basin there, tie the two ends and then put it in line going to the catch basin at the corner of the road there, and I think that would help kinda catch some of that and not force it all into one and, and maybe help kinda slow it down a little bit and be able to take home what's coming at it.
I appreciate all your help on that, sir.
So I need to know, do we want to move forward with State Street? And do you need a motion on expenditure or the budgeted type of items? For repairs? No, yeah, I think if he got a couple more, one quote, we need to approve which quote to use and authorize the expenditure, even if it's in the budget, just gonna authorize it.
So your prices again for?
It's a little over eight hundred dollars for the dual wall at Wayne County Sales. I don't have that number right in front of me exactly, I just jotted it down real quick when I was talking to him on the phone. And then it was fifteen hundred and thirty dollars through utility supply.
Now, is that, those quotes include the foreign, um, sock that you're talking about?
I took that out, 'cause, um, I didn't, that's for the community club, so that would be a different. That's for the community club.
Yeah, but you're wanting to do all of them, so I didn't know.
Take one at a time, yeah, let's deal with the State Street.
Okay.
Purchase at this point. So you're comparing apples with apples with that eight hundred versus the fifteen thirty?
Yes, yes, that's both dual wall, which is what needs to be in there.
And there's no reason to not take the smaller, the, the lower one would be as reasonable?
Yeah, there's no reason, I mean, we, we have to go pick it up, but we don't have brand new trailer, so.
I think then be incumbent then to, of course, accept the low bill.
Yeah, it's low.
Yeah.
All right, everyone clear on what that motion would be?
And has it called connection with it, are the clamps and everything with it?
They, so those, um, those dual wall pipes that are locked together, they already have a clamp on it.
Okay, all right, all right.
The single wall, you have to buy the connectors, so the dual wall, it already comes with that, they have a male and female end.
So at eight hundred dollars for the?
Yeah, it's a li, it's a little over eight hundred dollars, I'm not sure the exact number on that, but it is a little over eight hundred dollars for that pipe over there.
But that clamp slides together and then?
Yeah, yeah, it slides together.
You don't have that writing yet from them?
No, it was just, just quoted over the phone, that's what their price is, so.
Should we wait to get a written quote or?
I mean, if there's a need now, but in the future, if you ever want council approval of some expenditure, try to get something in writing and also know an exact number so they can approve that. I'll leave it up to council if you wanna do, I mean, it's, you, I mean, when you say a little over eight hundred, it's not eight ninety, it's within dollars of over?
Yeah, I think it was like, if I remember correctly, it's like eight, between eight twenty something or eight forty something, I'm not sure, I can't, can't remember right off the top of my head, I just know I wrote that down as a quick number, 'cause I was in a hurry.
For, for the amounts involved, you can approve tonight or if you'd rather wait until he has it in writing next month's meeting, depends on how urgent.
He benefits nine hundred, it's cheaper than fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that's why I don't, not, that's, if it's under nine hundred, I don't think it should be an issue.
Are you making that motion?
Uh, motion to approve West Wayne County Sales, um, storm sewer repair on State Street.
I'll second it. Well, there's a motion in the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, sir. And then the next item would be the drain sock, is that the right terminology?
It's a four inch perforated tile with a drain, with a sock on it.
This would be at the community club to help with the water still coming in the building, that I know for a fact is still happening, so. Is that it to east end?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're running off that bank right against the wall.
Motion to repair the community club water issue with the drain pipe.
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, new lawnmower working okay?
Yeah, yeah, working great.
Perfect.
We load everything in a day and a half as well, so.
Um, don't forget the cemetery cleanup, uh, remove your items before the fifteenth of this month, that's not very many days left. Anything else, sir?
Nope, I don't think so, that's all I have.
What happened?
Temporary help.
Yeah, um, Teddy is back to full time with, uh, Milton, um, so that takes our temporary help away. He said he'd still come down and help if we got in a pantry or whatever, but, um, I'd like to start looking for somebody to, to put in that position, I don't really know who we have, but.
That's basically just to help low.
Basically, yeah.
All right, well, if you find somebody, let us know. You know what the pay scale is, it's already established in the.
Four, yeah.
Where it is, so. Anything else, sir? Before you're released?
Unless I missed something on the list.
All right, Mrs. McCarty, clerk's report.
Uh, yeah, and I don't have any of my stuff on there, you don't have my fuel report or anything?
Nope. It's pretty, pretty simple.
Yeah. I'll get you the time cards and, um, and the fuel report, that's really the only thing that I have other than what's on old business.
No major issues with them, aren't there, was there?
No.
Did you want to talk about your temporary help?
Yeah, I can, I can bring that up. I am now, uh, the only one in the office. I would like to, I, I would like to consider Terry Craig for just temporary help, will not be filling that position anytime soon. Terry was the clerk in Milton for quite a few years and he retired, also helps, um, Pershing when they need help. So he is familiar with Keystone products and, um, if I have appointments and I may, um, need some, uh, time off for some doctor's appointments and things, uh, so I would like, um, to be able to call on him to come in and, and do that. He agreed to the same salary that Nancy was at, so I don't see any issues there, will be no healthcare or anything.
Do we need to go through the formal process of having to throw out an application and background check and all those type of legality issues?
I looked at your personnel policy and it's kind of a dual, um, approval process. The hiring of it can be done by your town clerk, so therefore I don't think you have to go through any kind of formal application process. However, it's up to council to approve what pay is going to any temporary person.
Which was already established.
Yes, although I don't think it would hurt, just to bless it that he, I mean, your salary ordinance talks about part-time help, she's got somebody in mind, but just to prove that, yes, he can get paid that amount shown in your salary ordinance.
So this is still a W two part-time employee?
It's temporary.
It's temporary, yes, but it would be a W two.
And you don't need, you don't, do you need an application or background check for a city employee?
I can, I can do that if you want to do that.
I mean, that's still good practice, obviously, as far as what was legally required, but yeah, good practice would.
We did that with Teddy, so I don't have a problem with doing that as well.
And I think if, Julie does that, I think it's still up to her, so I think it would still be incumbent if you want, because you probably need it before next month's meeting, don't you, for him, is to approve that contingent upon her being satisfied with that background, that she may hire the person that she wants to select and that you guys agree that they may be paid the same amounts of part-time wage on salary. So motion to that.
I make a motion, your lot box there? Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye. Thank you.
There you go, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Very good.
For a moment.
Uh, just for the record, Nancy Shank did resign from the town, uh, after what, twenty-three years, I believe?
Yes.
And, uh, so she's decided to do something else, so, uh, she left on her own will, so we wish her the best. Going into old business.
I'm gonna take one of these and pass it down and with ordinance three.
This is the fee schedule, general ordinance twenty twenty four.
Two dash twenty twenty two.
Dash.
And you're also getting three dash twenty twenty four because of our conversation at last month's meeting. And that is, we have to all remember to distinguish between your inspection fees, which is after somebody gets the permits for various things, that's what two dash twenty twenty four is about. And then the other fee is to actually get their building permit, or in some instances, that would include a tap-in for water or electrical. So let's first go on the inspection fee after our meeting last time, we made just a couple changes. We removed any reference to a percentage of the project cost, which we thought was gonna be difficult, if not maybe illegal. And so therefore we are showing, um, we did have, um, a percentage based on a couple of the things and now it's just flat inspections, like on the electrical improvement, there'll be five inspections at fifty a hit for the total of two hundred and fifty dollars. And so that is different than what had been originally proposed. Um, and then also on the water tap, because we now have ordinance three that talks about the initial fee, the inspection will still just be the one-time inspection fee of fifty dollars. So we've moved over what was gonna be tap-in instances to, um, and that we did for the electrical too. So both electrical and water will, the inspection fee will be fifty dollars after they have gotten their, um, permit. So then I draw your attention to ordinance three dash twenty twenty four. That is now talking, we've always had a permit required, but it was unclear what that permit was going to cost. So now we have a new section three point three oh seven in your code that says the fee for all building permits, regardless of the type, shall be twenty-five dollars, payable at the time of the issuance permit, provided in the case if it's installing new electrical service to any structure, thereby requiring a new electrical tap, that additional tap-in fee of four eighty will be required due to the additional work required of the town and due to the third-party fee, which must be paid at that time by the town. And then in addition, in the case of installing new water service to any structure, thereby requiring a new water tap or connection, an additional tap-in fee of two thousand dollars shall be required due to the additional materials, i.e. the meter and the services provided by the town at such time. I think this is kind of what has been done, but not actually in your code. So therefore we have three dash twenty twenty four talking about your actual permit tap-in fees. We've got two dash twenty twenty four talking about your real inspection fees after somebody gets the permit. All makes sense?
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, um, the commercial side of that would cost more than the residential?
On which, on the permit or the inspections?
On the, on the, the water, on the water tap. Cause that would be more than.
Well, it's kinda based on your size of the pipe, you know?
Right, but, but if you have to have like a two-inch pipe or something, you've gotta have a two-inch meter, so that's gonna take that price up. So where we're getting into, yeah.
Okay, so we, we can determine, do you know what that price, I know we've somehow must have figured what that price is gonna be for this residential, do we know what commercial would be?
Yeah, there depends on what size they have for their, their business, you know, two-inch, four-inch, whatever.
We had a, we had a, if I can correct me from our, Julie, but we did have a, um, we had a quote for the Dollar Store because that's, originally that's what they was gonna do was a two-inch and I think we got all our, our permit and everything sent over from the utility supply.
Yeah.
I have to go back and try and find that to.
Can we just word it as something to the effect of commercial, it would just be cost as is as time?
What we could do, if you'll, if you'll look at two dash twenty twenty four on the inspections, we have this sentence in there that it says, um, for unusually large or complex buildings or structures, the building commissioner shall have the power to increase the number of required inspections up to double the number, which in turn can increase the above maximum allowable fee. We could put a similar sentence on the permit one that says for unusually large or complex or commercial buildings or structure, you have the power to increase that permit fee based on the size of piping required.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense?
Yes.
Cause you could have a situation where you put a multi-apartment in where you have multiple bases.
Yeah.
Multiple water meters, yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Rex, the way it used to be, the way we worded it to customers was, this is your minimum tap fee, if the materials, um, come in higher than this, you will be responsible for anything different, which follows what you're saying, Bob.
Okay.
So I think that makes good sense.
So I think two dash twenty twenty four is probably ready to go past tonight if you wish. And then on three, if you wanna pass it with knowing that I will type in that extra sentence or if you wanna wait because there, I, unless there's a rush of permits in the next month, we could wait until next month, either way you wanna do it, it's fine with me.
About we approve it tonight via an email, uh, visual, whenever you get that.
I think I basically just read what I will type in there, so. With that amendment to that, I think that ordinance would be ready for passing.
Can we do them together or is that?
Let's do separate, so.
We'll start out with ordinance two dash twenty twenty four for the inspection fees.
Uh, question before we do that.
Yes, sir.
On the roof improvement, so it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for a, you get a roof put on your house now, is that what that reads?
Maximum inspections.
Maximum.
One inspection.
We had minimum required inspections, we had five, and five times fifty would be two fifty is what I was given as far as information. I'm not a roof inspector, but that's what I was told.
I was wondering, roof is one-time inspection, so you got a roof in it and they say to complete it, tear it down there.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna tear off, you gotta, I mean, you gotta look at the sheeting for the cover, you gotta look at the, you know, the, the, yeah, you gotta look at the joists or the rafters before they're covered up, I mean, you just, there's just steps you gotta take with that, so, but yeah, I mean.
Okay, I know always a Ford contractor usually does all that work and we just, you know, kinda watch over, but that's fine, you know?
But it's up to five, right?
No, this is saying five, that's what I'm saying, maybe that's not worded right, like Rex said, maybe.
Yeah, I think five inspections is just way too many for a roof. I mean, considered when a, the normal apartment house or motel is only three.
Maybe.
I'd say maybe just one inspection? I'd say maybe just one inspection.
Or change that wording maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose if, if we could change at the top of that to maximum required inspections. But then you want to leave yourself some room. Now, we are leaving ourselves some room for large or complex buildings, but for just a regular residence, you would not be leaving yourself any room if we changed that word from minimum to maximum. But if you think we're safe enough to do that, we can.
Well, actually, it reads all right. I mean, when you, one inspection, what you need and then you need another one, but you know, just charged by that way, I guess.
I'd like to get changing that to maximum.
You say you don't?
I do.
You do want to change it to maximum?
I mean, like electrical improvement, you got five there. I mean, that's quite a bit for electrical improvement.
Yeah, and if you can do it with less, I mean, you're saving your.
Right.
Residence is.
Yeah, I'd say that kind of price, in a way, they won't do nothing because they can't afford it, so yeah.
Okay.
Maybe standard required inspections?
Now, down here in the, in the, we can re-inspector fees, we can charge extra if they need to re-inspector if something didn't look right.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, I think we should just change it back to one for electrical and.
Well, no, no, I don't think you want to do that. If, you don't want to change that to one and change the minimum to maximum, because then you're never going to have more than one inspection for electrical.
I'd like to be changing the minimum to maximum. That just gives him the leeway to do what he feels is necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and the, and the thing is, I mean, that, that number five came from over here. Because he put it up, I went and looked at it, he had to take it back down. And that was like the second time I'd been over there. And so then it was like, that was three times I had to go over there and inspect that. So that's, that's where that come from, you know, was because he had to, he had to move it because it was, it was in violation. It was too close to a window and.
So each time that you do an inspection, are you filling something?
I think you fill out.
Probably ought to work on that, because I could see somebody coming in here saying, well, he only inspected it once, that's all I'm paying. Well, you really, you did four times, but you gotta have a paper trail to prove it.
There should be some sort of, probably.
Or maybe it was something they initial while you're there too.
That's what I was going to say. There should be a sign-off. Maybe I can find one online or something and, you know.
I know, like, as far as the county, they actually have a sticker when you're done. They write their name and stick it like a sticker inside the meter base. And that lets us know if you know it's approved.
And if you'll notice the last sentence there, two, at the end of each year, the building commissioner will submit an annual report that talks about the number of permits issued, how many inspections were performed, what permit fees were issued. So it would be helpful to know then for each project, how many inspections were occurring.
Okay. It'd be easier to cover your butt.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the tracker going forward, it was right, three point six.
Yeah. All right, well, let's take all this back to the drawing board. Let's let, see if you can come up with something that we can add with this as far as your checkoff list. And see if we can work all this out next month.
So we want to go change the minimum to. What do you want?
I think that would be clear enough. That gives us a leeway.
Okay.
You want to approve it with that change or again, wait till next month?
I just wait for everything next month. We'll try to get all three of these things in together.
Okay.
We're not any time crunch, are we?
I don't think so, but. And it's not like we have people leaving their door down the building here.
Oh, we have a pretty lucky lady.
We may see something tomorrow that we want to look at too, so it's. Send an email out and say, hey, this really doesn't bother me. We can look at this too before we do the final approval next month, so.
Want to move into our burn?
Let's burn.
Now, we're at number four dash twenty twenty-four. And this one should be pretty easy. I have actually boldened the changes. And I think what we're really doing here is changing your code to mirror what you're really doing in practice. So two basic changes on that. First.
Is there just five?
There should be another one.
That you can.
You can have James too. My little Jerry, read it for the time being.
In four point eight oh two, we are saying that no burning shall be conducted during unfavorable meteorological conditions, such as temperature inversion, blah, blah, blah. That's always been there. Or during any burn ban put into place by an applicable fire department or any applicable governmental entity. I think that's what we wanted to make clear, that that would also be a complete prohibition during those periods of times. And then as far as those, those fires that were, are only allowed with a variance, yeah. What you are doing is providing a burn permit. And we now say that burning with the prior approval of town council or the town clerk treasurer may be authorized for the following. And then we, the, the code will give all of those things. I didn't repeat those here. And then saying that those burnings allowed pursuant to this section four point eight oh three on variances shall be evidenced by a written burn permit issued by either the town council or clerk treasurer following that variance application and shall be valid for a period of thirty days from the date of issuance. That was another little tweak that we wanted to put in there as far as how long that variance would be allowable for. So we're not changing what are the possible variances. We're just clarifying that procedure for that one so that both the town council or the clerk treasurer can authorize it and it shows that they will get a burn permit that's good for thirty days. Is that pretty accurate of what?
Exactly. Now, was this the one that said that an officer can issue a ticket then? But this is the one?
Oh, yeah, there violation of it.
Any more questions? I make a motion we accept orders number four dash two zero two four.
Is there a second? I'll check, all favor, aye? Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Speaking of that, were you able to get with Chief Roberts about issuing tickets?
I talked with him and he said, let me consider some of it. He was working the clips and all that other stuff, so I thought he was bad, so.
Okay. Anything else from you tonight, sir?
Uh, no, and the other, you talked about some different fees. That is so encompassing on different code sections. I don't have that ready, but we want to.
Sure thing. All right, the mural was approved for the north building. So what do we do next? We have to hear from them?
Yes, I just put these on so, to let people know since we're at a regular meeting. Basically, this mural program is part of Wayne County's, the Help Grant, the legacy grant that they have. Some of that money was set aside to do murals. They had ten murals to do. They were trying to do one in each community. It is a contest. Artists from all over can come and apply. And, and then residents can drive by when they're done, see it and actually vote on it. I believe voting is in November if I'm, or they want to have it. I don't know for sure the date that it's done. But I know that they will advertise voting on it and then they'll have first, second, and third winners. We win because we get a nice mural on our warehouse, which is up on North Johnson Street. The other part of that is the town board gave a blessing for Wayne County to consider the community club for their Wayne County Community mural. With the community mural, that is open to the public to come and help paint that. I know one of the previous ones is if you are going on forty and you go down Sim Hodgkins right there at the bottom of the bridge, they had done a community mural right there in the past. And that's, I know they, they've had another one, but I'm not sure where any of the others are. But, so we're going to be fortunate enough hopefully to have two additions to the one that the fire station has.
Have we been assigned an artist yet?
No. I think that they're getting ready to choose the artists. And I'm not sure how they're doing who gets what spot. But that'll be coming up, I believe, before the end of this month.
And this is no cost to the town?
No cost to the town.
They will let us know what's going to go on there or we have to approve that, do we?
We will have to approve. If we're chosen to do the community mural, we'll have to approve a contract just like we did for the, the one on the north building that we, we just did. And basically what that's saying is, we've kept the buildings in good enough shape that they really didn't need prep, so we don't have that cost. But we just need to maintain, maintain it after the mural is put up for five years. So that would be the only expense that we would have. The other thing that we approved at the, along with the public hearing at our special meeting was Commonwealth had moved forward with our SRF grant submission. And the board approved the PER, which is the preliminary engineering report. We had already approved that, however, they approved that for the USDA and we're moving from the USDA funds to the SRF funds. So they had to make some adjustments and so then we had to approve that. And, and the board did approve that. And along with the environmental review, everything has been submitted to SRF. So we're just waiting in a waiting stage. But that's the big water grant to do some major work down at the, at the warehouse. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions on that? Let's see. Anything else in our old business before we jump into the, on the board? All right, we've got to approve the mitigation plan that Wayne County puts out. Since we're a resident of Wayne County, that just kind of includes us as well. We don't have it in front of us, but I believe it's a book about yay thick.
And it is here if anybody wants to read it. Did go through and made changes. They still had Rex's name as the main contact for the emergencies and stuff. So we switched that from Rex to Lenny. We do still have, I believe, Nathan and Rex on there as backup.
I think basically what it boils down to, if we need federal help or if something bad happens, that's, it's going to help get us there, so. It's part of being connected to the county emergency management agency. So it is something we normally do. I think it's every five years, if I'm not mistaken.
It is.
So we just need to do our five-year annual renewal with them.
Is there a number on this resolution we need to put on here?
R four dash twenty twenty-four. And I know we had the ordinance, I have the resolutions have a R in front of it and then the ordinance is don't.
Oh, okay.
So just so everybody knows what I'm, what I'm doing there.
All right. I make a motion we accept the resolution R four dash two zero two four.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You actually write up that resolution or is that just effectively approving the mitigation plan?
Um, just approving the plan. I did not write that up. That's what they gave us.
Oh, they gave us something, okay.
Yes.
I got you.
I'm pretty sure Cambridge should have had something or should have something similar to that.
Yeah.
Because they changed their meeting because of.
Oh, okay.
All right, next up is talking about a pay increase for Lenny Pang. He passed his first water certification, finally yay, after a lot of struggle and heartache and loss of sleep and blood, sweat, and tears, so. He's, he's definitely earned that, so we're open for proposals on the table. My thought was another dollar on the hour. We'll open it up to the board for.
Your salary ordinance didn't have an automatic increase when that was approved?
Not when, not when he took over. We had it on there for Drew. But it went back to, it was not included after.
And it wasn't, nothing was determined like when he got hired that it wasn't like part of when he got hired? After you get this, you get X amount or there was nothing set?
No. But the agreement was for previous employees that were trying to do that is they get a dollar for the first certification and they get an additional dollar after the second certification. So I mean, it's up to you guys now where we're at, but that was what was considered and put in for the previous employee.
Kind of the precedence that had been set at that time, so. So he's slowly starting to work on his next certification and I don't think it'll be anytime real soon, but that's the next goal anyway, so.
You need to check the state where the council, when you increase a salary from a salary ordinance, do we have to actually amend that ordinance?
Yes, we did.
I thought we did, so even if you prove that tonight, we ought to have a formalized amendment to that.
Okay.
Any motion made, Andy?
Well, unless you guys got a different suggestion, so that's, that's at least my suggestion at the moment, just from the past presidents that have been set, so. But yes, a motion would need to be.
Make a motion, gets a dollar increase in the salary for first test.
Do you want to go ahead and include what it would be for the second one as well?
If it gets his other.
A dollar for each?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You want to work on that for next month? We can sign it.
I sure will.
Thank you. You're going to do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now it's time for the inter-local agreement for Wilson Park.
I reviewed it as standard form with the county. It's just talking about the Wilson Black Parade Playground in which its estimated project cost is a hundred thousand. This is talking about that the county will award ten thousand of that in a supporting grant. It's all from their ARPA funds. You have to extend them on before December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And just talks about the responsibility for each, each party of what's going on and why this is allowed pursuant to the overall ARPA goals. And there's an exhibit A that I think Julie has prepared to that we attach it, talking about more specifics on the project, but otherwise it is just a standardized form that allows the county to give you that money.
Any questions on the county giving us money?
Now, more in detail on the hundred thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars, this, this is our crowdfunding, our crowd fundraiser that we're doing right now. The state will give us fifty thousand dollars if we can come up with fifty thousand dollars in our fundraising project, which is online. And that is the Wilson Park Project through Patronicity. And that's, the fifty thousand is what we have to come up with. And Wayne County has graciously, they're giving us ten thousand dollars towards that fifty thousand dollars.
So that makes your then just forty.
Yes.
Okay, so this, so it's not a hundred and ten total, it's a hundred total.
No, it's a hundred total.
And then, okay, fifty from the state, fifty from local, and of that local, this is ten of it?
Yes.
Okay.
And we got forty-five days left still to collect from the public for donations.
People can go on the Patronicity site. There is a link on our website. Or if people want to write a check and drop it off here, they'll get a receipt and it will be added online so they can, they can see that added to the balance.
Is there any level of contribution that allows any kind of recognition at the park after this project's done?
Um, fifty thousand or fifty dollars, they get a thank you and a mug. If they get five hundred, I do believe, they get the invite. And anything over that, they get an invite to the ribbon cutting. And then we will have, like we do with the existing donors board that we have now, there will be a board and based on gold, silver, bronze, and patrons, thank you. There will be a board up there that.
You, you don't know what the breakdowns are as far as to do it?
It's a thousand and up is gold, five hundred to a thousand is silver. I believe one hundred to five hundred is bronze.
Okay. You're still people watching like?
Yes, and I have that, I know that.
I know the SAL the other night.
I know the SAL the other night donated two hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Which is the Sons of the American Legion, so.
Yes.
It looks like there's a ten or more, a fifty or more, a hundred or more, a five hundred or more, or a thousand or more. So the thousand would be the gold.
Yes.
The five hundred would be the silver, the one hundred would be the bronze. Fifty is called the fans of the park. And the ten is called the friends of the park. And then, and all the tens, do I give them a thank you note as well?
Yes.
Or is this a?
I'm, I'm giving everybody um.
Regardless, they get a thank you.
Yes, they get a, they get a thank you and then.
Move up to fifty, you get the mug.
You get the mug, yes. And then above that, you get, I mean, anybody will be able to, will, is more than welcome to come to the ribbon cutting, but they will.
Be recognized.
Be recognized based on their, their donation.
We got forty-five days left and we've got almost three thousand as far as online donations, twenty-nine ninety at the current moment, so. We're on the way. Now, does this amount include people that have brought stuff in here to the office?
Yes, cause I just put that in the other day. I do have um, another um, two hundred and fifty, cause I have to put the American Legion or the Sons of the American Legion. And I just got a check from um, Wayne County Foundation for ten thousand dollars.
Fantastic.
So.
Great.
Um, those have to be, those are not included in that price, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
What happens if we don't give the fifty thousand?
You, you gotta come up with it.
It's, it's a, you get it all or lose it, um, but the.
Fish fry, yes.
Hey, we'd have a lot of people, they come for that, I still get people asking. But, yeah.
The foundation, wouldn't that help?
Yes, it did.
Brings it down to thirty, isn't it?
Yeah. So we're, we're moving right along, I'm, I'm proud of uh, uh, where we're at. And I think we'll, we'll meet what we need.
Absolutely. So we need to get a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for the park with the county commissioners.
I make a motion, we accept an interlocal agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could you think tournament is misspelled? When you send it? Julie, if you wanna correct tournament?
Thank you.
The other one had a couple, I'll say those too.
Okay.
Where are you seeing tournament at?
Yeah, let's see.
It's on my schedule.
Oh, it's not on the agreement?
No.
It's just a little.
Oh, yeah.
On the exhibit, then it's gonna be attached, so.
Mm-hmm.
On Schedule A, Part One. That was a Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to sign that one, while you guys are reading over the next interlocal agreement.
The next one's by most. Next one's almost identical.
Yes.
Um, except for the paragraph five that talks about the project. And this one is your sidewalk project, total project cost one hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred. And the county is giving grant of sixty-four thousand thirteen. All, every other paragraph is the same as what you just put.
And this one, um, the, the difference in the funds, we're, we're getting more from the county. And this is the one that we are applying our, our both uh, funds. The thirty percent that we um, pledged to put towards the project, that's what's going with this, to come up with it.
Then you're having a conversation with Mr. Davis's representative while we're talking about this?
Uh, yeah. We received their quote, well, let's, let's do this first.
I don't know if it needs to be a part of it or not.
Um, no, not yet.
Okay.
This, this is just getting our money from the county.
So basically the same as the last time we did this, just a little different wording, a little different project.
There's no numbers on these interagreements to make this.
This one, oh, no.
Okay.
No.
I understand where it's going where, but yeah, it's fine.
Motion to approve the interlocal agreement for the sidewalks.
There you go.
All second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now, um, I have two bids.
That one goes with the.
First one?
Park.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to say anything, or you're just here to listen?
Um, well mostly to listen, but yeah, I can speak for a minute. So um, a couple of things, um, reviewing this project. It is a monstrous project as far as where do you start, where do you stop, and that's sort of how we quoted it, the way we did. Um, we are licensed, we are, or not licensed, we are insured, we are bonded, we have workman's comp, all that good stuff. Um, I'm not a big believer in using people as references, that there's a business side of it. But I am a firm believer in using product. Couple of years ago, we did the sidewalks in Fountain City. I think it was last spring, we did uh, sidewalks on Main Street of Hagerstown, front of William Reds and so forth. Late last fall and then early, early this winter, we just finished a monstrous project on thirty-five and thirty-six, that new gas station. It's almost an acre of concrete, it's like twelve hundred some yards. So we try to stay on the day-to-day business, small and lean and efficient, but we can do the bigger projects as well. A lot of these sidewalks, um, not throwing stones at the community or nothing, but there's a lot of trees and a lot of walls and this is not the walking the park project, so.
Can you give kind of a rough idea how long you think this project might take as a whole?
Um, I guess it depends on how far we go, or how far it, it is going to be taken. You know, I, I would like to think that we would get it done yet this year. We do have another community that's in front of you, which is a much smaller project that I would hope to have done by, in maybe April, we have, but probably late into May. You know, it, it really needs to stop raining. But, but again, it depends on the size of the project, what actually gets, how much we do, so.
Basically, um, what we put out there was all existing sidewalks. Um, not necessarily being able to afford to do them all, but to at least get quotes on all sidewalks, north and south, that are already there. Um, if they have curb and guttering, replacing curb and gutter. Um, if they need ADA ramps, replacing or, or adding. Um, the only addition that we did was um, a previous employee or a previous council member wanted to see about a sidewalk going from the edge of the apartments on down to the cement or to the pavement um, on the west side of Milton Street going towards the park. So I included that in that um, bid. Uh, so with that, um, Milestone gave us a breakdown, dollar for dollar. Um, Dan Davis excavating gave us uh, square footage, so much per square footage. But from what I came up with, I, I think Lenny still needed to go verify um, some information for me.
Yes, he did.
Um, you are done with it, or you still need to do it?
I still need to do it.
Um, basically, how much of um, is included in what Milestone has? And if it's different, which is the driveway approaches or the alley approaches, because um, Dan broke those out. Uh, but at this point, without those, there is a substantial difference. And Davis excavating is substantially lower, so we should be able to get more, possibly more sidewalks done than what we would be able to do um, with Milestone. So I, I give you that much.
Does this money need to be spent this year?
Yes.
So you would have to guarantee in your contract, right? That it has to be done this year?
Well, no, it has to be, it has to be done by the end of twenty twenty-five.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's, that's.
We have to have it, we have to have it under contract, I believe, before the end of the year.
Okay.
Um, but they have until um, twenty twenty-five to actually do the work.
So I guess a question I would have as far as, let's see. I come out here happy and everything's approved, um, as far as the payment schedule side. Typically, especially with the concrete, we can get a monthly on account. Would there be payment plans, or is it all, again, being small and lean and efficient? One of the downsides of it is, is it's gonna be, you know, push to throw it, put it away till the end of twenty twenty-five to get it done.
Well, most contracts are gonna have progress payments.
Right, right.
As you're done with a percentage of the project, you could get a percentage less in the payments, it's retained, it's held back.
So you suggest like quarter or, or ten percent?
What are you, what is your timeline in Pershing? Cause I know Dan said you're doing Pershing.
Right, that is the community before us. Um, it was five months from the time the project was signed.
Okay.
So um, we are very good if we get it done in May, so then we would bounce from there um, to here.
And he said it really, it shouldn't be long to do it, um.
Right, um, and it's, it really isn't apples to apples, so a lot of what we're doing there.
Yeah.
Um, we actually get to work off of um, parking lots and, and a lot of what we're looking at here is the opposite, um, which is unfortunate, I mean, it is what it is.
Because of the type of funding from the federal government there, we have to meet ADA requirements. Are you familiar with all of them? Because there are some of them very strict, and the minute you start doing some improvements, one opens the door for what else has to be done with that. I'm not personally familiar with all of them, but I know that there's just a lot of detail that I'm told by contractors, you have to be very careful of.
Um, I guess, no, I'm not familiar with every single little fine print. I would be, be in the line if I'd said that.
Yeah.
Um, I can say that we did do the federal grant program from, for Fountain City and Hagerstown and now Pershing. So I don't think it's be a problem to.
We assume somebody looks up those requirements and follows them as you're making the work.
Right, correct, so.
And when Dan asked about the scope of work, that's what we told him, it would be very similar to what was done in Hagerstown because it's the same kind of um, work. And he was, he was okay with that.
When you said you're not comfortable with personal references, are you saying we ought not to call Fountain City?
You can, you can, yeah, but I'm just saying, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't put Bob Smith on, on the spot. My point is, is anybody could walk down through the sidewalks in Fountain City, you could walk down, go to William Reds. And, and yeah, you can ask, you know, the business owners as well, because I can also tell you that William Reds, Logo Shop, the Boot Box, and I'm sure I'm missing a bunch of them. Not one of those had to close one, one day.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Now, um, we actually made a bridge for the Logo Shop and Boot Box for an afternoon. Um, we um, same way with the Dance with Cindy there on the side. So is it the perfect situation that it is every nice sunny Wednesday afternoon? No, but the fact that we was able to accomplish all that and not shut one business down, um, and I don't think we have one complaint from any business.
Sure, I was thinking more of the people who actually hired you for the work. I mean, yes, it's important for business owners too, but as far as people hire, and I understand what you're saying as far as in-project speaks for itself.
Yes.
But there's also the things about, well, he was very responsive and coming, or they never answered a phone call we made to him. Those are, so, those are kind of things.
Yeah, and it's, I, I, I personally have an issue with getting to a list of people to call and say, but yeah. We, we stay busy, verbiage, and one of them is, we are, like I said, lean and we um, I'm not sure how much cheaper we were than Milestone, it'd be kind of interesting to know that, what would be.
Well, I, I can't do anything until he gets me, cause the.
It's a square footage.
Yeah, the way you guys did it was a little different.
Right.
So we've gotta, I've gotta get it so that I can compare apples to apples.
Understand.
How many guys you got working for your, on your team?
So um, we have three full-time guys. Um, we also have another, I wanna call it a sister team, um, which helped us in Hagerstown, helped us on San Mill, if you will. And Fountain City, uh, we work side by side, it's kind of a very neat arrangement. Um, first and foremost, we're really good friends with them. We're a competitor some days, we're partners some days, we're, um, they'll help us pour concrete on Monday and we'll help them pour on Tuesday. And I'm sure it's a counting nightmare for somebody, but, but um, they've got three or four people as well. So um, one is we will ensure of, um, again, I wish it would never rain for us this summer, but I don't think many, or I can control that. But we will make a point, is once we get it tore out, we'll get it replaced. It's not like we're gonna tear out, you know, all of Milton Street and in the twenty twenty-five promise to have it done. That's not how we work and um, you know, I would like to say within a couple of days, it'll be what we tear out, we'll um, it'll be back in.
So you guys don't, I guess on the get-out, you guys don't have any issues with the no-show, or people not showing up and you just close down for the day? That's some situations we've seen.
Well, yeah, we all, we'd all say no for the eclipse, ironically, but that was, um, we work, usually look six days a week, sometimes seven. Some of us will interchange in and out. Um, we are very family oriented, um, one of our guys, his wife had car trouble today, so yeah, but we moved on. So yeah, we're, we're good to go. And having the sister crew, like we said, we've, we send people back and forth all the time.
Where do you get your concrete?
Um, typically IMI, this would be an IMI project, again, trying to stay local. That's not, if they can't get us what we need, we would usually, then we go to Ernst Richmond Concrete second. IMI is the plan for East Richmond Town, and they're excited and, um, we like their products, they are local, they but to fully answer your question, if we're in Richmond, uh, the green trucks are, therefore local.
Uh, I know you probably don't have a lot of material, but you haven't had any issues with not getting material in, or you've had to delay the job by several weeks or months?
Weeks or months, no, we try, uh, sometimes we can't get it that day we want. We try to schedule ahead and therefore, um, you know, we got, you know, we try to have course scheduled for the days coming up. Then we try to make, make sure, make that deadline, be ready for that for.
Now, Lenny, how will the removal work? Will we keep the concrete in the rubber bed, or do they take it?
I'm sure we could probably use it over there.
Have they been established in the contract yet, or anything to talk about yet?
I guess not. That would be our preference if we could use a rubber bed, but if not, um, we do have a place we can go with it.
Well, I guess close and local, so it might, you know, cost low.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? I sure appreciate you coming tonight, it, you know, means a lot.
And I think one of the things I did fail to mention, um, that was full-time employees, we had, uh, I've got twins sons over twenty that love to get after it and do that, they both work for Kewitt Contracting, actually. So they'll do a lot of weekend work, a lot of evening work. So we would probably be, a lot of evenings we'll be tearing out. And a lot of Saturdays we may be tearing out and hopefully get ready to pour on on Monday. Um, which would probably be beneficial and will be homeless far as car being out of the way or needing to be moved and so forth.
But you guys aren't doing any like late night work where it's gonna keep the neighbors in a bad mood by making a bunch of noise and that kind of stuff?
Unless it's needed.
Okay.
Isn't it the hours seven?
Typically, it'd be.
Seven to nine or something?
Typically, once it gets dark, we would stop, just everything slows down. But ironically, you said that, we did tear out in front of William Reds, um, after they closed on the Sunday night. um, after they closed on the Sunday night, we worked all the way up to Monday. So they could, so they could be open again, good shift to go before Wednesday. So if there's a situation like that, then we could and would, but, um, our goal was not to have everyone mad at you or us.
I think our only issue was, would be the funeral home and I don't think there's even any spots over there to worry about, is there?
I don't think so.
So.
It's all US forty sidewalks, so.
Yeah. Um, we will be, um, Lenny's gonna get the rest of the information that I need so that I can make sure that we're comparing apples to apples and, um, we will be, it will be on the agenda to make a decision at like next month's meeting.
Okay.
So you guys will still be working at that point, I'm assuming? So you won't be going to another job and causing us a delay?
Yeah, that's not, uh, yeah, issue, when is your next month's meeting?
Uh.
Can't see that far away.
Yeah, I can't either.
Second Tuesday.
So it'll be May fourteenth, six o'clock.
Yeah, if you have any questions, um, do you have my number, Lenny?
I have Dan's. Get his.
Right, um, mine's seven six five two three eight five four seven two.
Do you guys have a standard contract that you use or are you looking for the town to prepare one for your use or?
Um, typically, the town of Hagerstown prepared one and the town of Pershing prepared one. Um, I could draw it up sometime if you.
Can you copy in place? You have people to hold up?
Um, if you wish, I could forward to one that we did for East German Town, if that would expedite your.
At the time, I would look at it.
Yeah, you have to change names and so forth, but, but, um, or if you just rather do.
No, I mean, more samples I have, the better, so.
Yeah, uh, what was your email address, sir?
Yeah, it's B Beaver, there's no A in that Beaver. It's B double, B E V E R at B B F C S Law.
Hold on a second.
B, B Beaver at B B F like in Frank, C like in Cat, S like in Sam, and then Law dot com. It looks like Slaw when you read it.
Got you. So you're at Richmond with?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Lips.
Yeah, he's a partner.
Yeah, so he's got that.
Okay, that's who I would look at.
Yeah.
Adam Forrest does some Hagerstown work, so we, we've got some towns covered, so.
Okay, so yeah, they're, they're familiar with what we've done and do and so forth, so. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'll.
I appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, that's all. And if, you know, beyond this scope, if you got anything you need.
So as far as towns, you've done German Town, Fountain City and Hagerstown as far as Wayne County's concerned?
We've not done German Town yet.
You're in the process, so.
Yeah, right.
I'm saying, folks from the town board wanna take a drive.
Right, right, um, and then the, the big, I said, it's almost an acre, probably like that new gas station that was Sanville. Um, I don't know if anybody's been by it or not, but it's a monster. They basically took the old, the gas station down, moved another building back and we, um, and it's almost about acre concrete. Um, we did all the sidewalk work, sidewalk work at Family Dollar and La Sanville and, um, likewise.
That's an interesting corner.
It is.
Dollar tree and Family Dollar and Dollar General on the same corner.
Yeah, right. And it's busy.
Yeah.
It's busy, so.
Sounds like a good excuse to go to Hagerstown.
There you go.
Stop the Willie and Red's.
That's right.
Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming down.
I think she made a motion.
All right, thanks, guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we did approve that contract, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're down to claims. Welcome Gina, board.
Damn, I missed the whole meeting, didn't I?
Yeah.
How fast did you start?
Six.
Six?
It started a couple of months ago, I changed to six.
I talked to Suzie about that.
First of the year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Damn, no wondering later. I was waiting on seven, seven thirty. Six o'clock now.
Hey, you're here for the good stuff.
All right, all right.
Really, there wasn't any major event happen, I don't think, so just approved a lot of contracts tonight and.
What's the schedule, or fee schedule? What's that amount to, anything?
Uh, that's how much we charge for, um, permits and stuff.
Okay.
And we're not quite done with that. We've still gotta tweak that, so you'll see it again.
Okay, burn permit orders stay the same?
Yeah, we just tweaked it to how it's worded.
To clarify exactly what you're doing now as far as actually giving a burn permit and as far as a variance, those certain things that are allowed only if they get a burn permit, both council and/or the clerk of trade can approve that, cause some people need it before your next council meeting.
It was more stuff we were doing, we just had to put it in words.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Does he know about the two interlocal agreements for the park and the sidewalks? Just to allow the county to give us some money, that's always a good.
That's for money coming from the county? Uh, that'd be tough to get.
Well, ARPA technically, but the county has their hand on it first.
What we're doing in the park, the stuff around playground equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we got forty-five days left to collect for that and we got almost three thousand at the moment.
Well, plus ten from foundation.
Ten's on the way. Ten is on the way from Wayne County Foundation. Our goal was fifty, so we're sitting at about thirteen right now.
Well, plus then the county itself is giving ten.
Right.
So that's ten, twenty, so you're about twenty-three.
Halfway there.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand, I always put that stuff around.
That's our match. It's cost a hundred thousand for the.
Oh.
Yeah. Fifty is what we gotta come up with.
Okay.
Fifty is what the grant is, so.
Fifty's not cheap.
Fifty's what the public has to come up with.
Lenny, I feel something's on your mind over there.
It kind of is. I don't know, I have to. You guys go ahead.
We're getting ready to shut it out pretty soon, so if you wanna get it out, you better get it out.
I don't wanna say anything, so I'm trying to make it short, so.
All right, give a, flick over the claims as well, we're doing this.
What about that?
Uh, the motion to approve the claims to AP.
Oh.
One second. Okay, there's a motion by Bree and a second by Rex to approve the claims.
Thank you.
Should have been presented.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, but yes, you need to go ahead and, you need to go ahead and bring that up.
Okay.
Uh, we'll let them vote on it.
Yeah, okay, I thought we did, sorry.
Pay the bills, so we need to approve the claims, or excuse me, the financial report. We got the claims done, so now we'll get the financial report.
Make a motion, we say to financial, will it be presented?
Okay, motion by Rex, second by.
Second.
Second by Gene, all in favor, I.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I didn't actually hear you say that about the claims. Did you actually vote? I heard you vote.
Yes, it was Bree and Rex.
They said that, okay.
Yeah.
But we didn't vote.
I don't think you voted.
No.
No, I didn't, I.
Lenny disrupted me then.
I'm sorry.
All in favor on the claims, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes to pay the bills.
Start over.
Thank you, Bob. I'd hate to be on the front page of the plate.
Paying claims is not cool, that's.
All right, Lenny, what's on your heart, sir?
Um, so, a couple of months back, we talked to, uh, we talked about the property over here beside the cemetery, the five acres.
So it's the Doyer Farm?
Yes, the auction for that is tomorrow. Um, he called me today and wanted to know how, if the town was still interested. And so we needed to discuss that with you guys to figure out, I mean, it's just gonna be hard for the town to swing it, I think, I don't know.
I, I guess what is the proposal and what is the options? Is he wanting us to bid at the auction or is he gonna give us a piece that doesn't?
He's wanting us to bid at the auction.
So, probably ain't got nothing to do with him at all then.
No, other than he, so he set that piece of property aside for the town.
That's why it's in the green.
That's why it's in a track.
Green tracks.
Yeah, so if the town is, if the town is not going to.
Kind of quick, put something good.
Be able, if the town is not.
Bid on something like that as a town.
I know, because anything that's used in that would be a public, not, I mean, if, if you say, yes, let's approve a bid up to ten thousand dollars, I just made that up, but then other people are gonna hear that and they know how high you're gonna bid.
Right.
So it makes it just tough for the town to, it's not even absolutely impossible, but it would be very unique to be bidding at a public auction. The auction's tomorrow, right? The auction's tomorrow?
Auction's tomorrow, I guess. He called me today and asked if we was still serious about it and if not, he would like to know as soon as possible so he could get the other guy that's interested in part of that to, to tie that together with the other, with the other track, so.
I'm not sure, I have to be interested, has anything to do with the bidding process or the auction itself?
Well, because if we're, if we're not, if we're not interested, then he can throw that into another track that the other guy's looking at.
And have two tracks instead of three.
Instead of three. Because they basically just set that tracked out so that the town could.
Bid on it.
Bid on it. That's the only reason they set that tracked out.
But it's locked in now where it has to go to the auction. He can't pull it out separately.
He was never willing to pull it out separately.
No, he was never.
In fact, he wanted, if, when he had it for sale, he wanted us to buy it for what he wanted for it.
How much was that?
Like what, eleven, uh, an acre?
Was it eleven or thirteen?
Thirteen.
I think it was thirteen.
Something like that, an acre.
I think it was thirteen an acre.
And, you know, with, with all the matching stuff we're doing, I, I.
Yeah.
We don't have that kind of money to do that right now.
And it's like five acres in the track we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know who this other guy is?
No, no, I don't. I mean, that's the other thing, you know, maybe, you know, what's this, you know, if we're back out of it and just let this guy do what he's gonna do if he winds up with it, then maybe, maybe the other guy would, you know, maybe we could possibly buy it later on. I don't know.
I don't know.
Now, is that the ground between Marter Heights and the Sanvill?
No.
I think it's Gene's.
At this point in time before.
It's.
Those are.
That's your copy.
The.
What?
Who greets doesn't get back it?
Oh.
We don't spend that on Ryder Park. For her.
But we could always look at making an agreement with, you know, which what we were trying to do with him was, you know, we could purchase this.
And then.
And then you could continue to farm it until we need it, which is probably.
Cambridge does it there, so.
Yeah, so, so maybe with the new owners.
We might be able to.
That's what I wondered if he was gonna turn it into farmland or turn it into housing.
I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it's probably farmland, cause he's wanting, I think the guy, the other guy is interested in one track. I don't know which track it is, but whichever track it is that he's interested in, I think he's interested in the other two, so. He, he didn't go into great detail with me with, about, you know, who was what, just he wanted to know, so I talked to Julie and.
Did let go?
We just decided to, you know, I need, I need to know whether to call him tonight and tell him, hey, go ahead and try and push it with the other track, you know?
Wouldn't it be a lot cheaper or more beneficial for us to take over that railroad track and come this way or come that way with the cemetery rather than going out into that field?
You can never put graves in that railroad track. There's too many.
There's too much cement and concrete.
You never get a, it wouldn't work out at all.
It'd be a nightmare for.
They brought the trash up that high?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, there might be two foot of dirt, but not, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Do you know if the auction is out here or is it somewhere else?
I don't know. He didn't say where the auction was.
I just wonder if you could go there, maybe meet this other person and have an off the record conversation with them. The, the new buyer, so. I don't think there's nothing we can do tonight.
No.
Yeah, no, but that's, that's what I was, that's, that's how I was going down, but I wanted to, I talked to Julie, I was just like, I don't know, I don't like.
Yeah, I think it'll just, just go as it is. If you have an offsite conversation, let us know and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Uh, also, don't forget on your to-do list, uh, try and work on some black arms for the poles out here for the banner project, so keep that on your burner.
And I'm still trying to get, um, quotes from Sternberg or whoever that we got our banners and streetlights from. Um, she had to go find a manufacturer, so she's trying to get numbers for me um, on getting the black, um, bands and that kind of stuff.
Also, the other thing is we have our inspection coming up this next month too for the, for my IDM. So I'm really working hard on that stuff, so it's taking a lot of time, so just bear with me.
We appreciate it, sir. Good job on passing your test.
Thank you.
You did pass it?
Yeah.
Outstanding.
I got one more to go.
Oh, you still got one to go?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. I thought you only had one to go.
No.
Any other business to be brought up tonight? Not, well, that's for motion to adjourn.
That'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion passes. See you all next month.